So this is seven o'clock on Tuesday, January 16th. I'm going to call the regular planning board meeting to order. We'll stand and punch the flag.
Let me introduce you to what I like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Galog.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly.
Here.
Brittany Whitcup.
Here.
Mike Dana.
Here.
Kathy.
Here. We've got a new member today. We have Michael Dana. He was formerly with the zoning board of appeal. He's now an alternate on the planning board. And he's here tonight. He will be participating but not voting. And Brittany will be participating but not voting tonight. Did everyone look at the minutes way back from December 5th? That was our last meeting.
So move.
Motion by Paul Marquesi.
So.
Seconded by Steve Tanner. Any corrections or additions? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, next, first thing on our agenda. This will work out pretty good because we have public comments on an agenda item. One of our agenda items is Jason Bonsignori. And we have some people that wish to speak on that. Is that right?
If we can. If not, we'll just listen.
Pardon me?
If we can.
Yes. This is the time on the agenda that you can speak.
Okay.
So if you'd like to stand up or if you want to sit down, it's okay too. As long as we can hear you. I don't hear as good as I used to.
I'll try and project.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Tamperousky. My husband, Jason. We live on Kelsey Road. And we're just here to find out more information, possibly about what hours the new track will be running. If I understand correctly, it's on the other side of Polar Wave. And we've just had a lot of concerns over the years, as I'm sure everyone's aware, of the Area 51 track. So we're just trying to get more information, hours, usage times. Because with both tracks going at the same time, that's still a lot of concern for us, nonstop. So we're just trying to get more information on that.
Okay, and there will be a short presentation coming up on the agenda. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on an agenda item? Okay, not hearing anything. We're going to hold off our first presentation. And we'll start with Mr. Bonsignori. You are, he is not here? And who is here for him? He, no one's here today. Okay. Okay, so we won't do that just yet. We've got Wesley Winters. Wesley, okay. Would you like to tell us about your plan? We saw, we saw what you presented to the county.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't talked about it yet. What we have to do, you'll need a special use permit for this. And so what we want to do tonight is set a public hearing. We'll give the public a chance to come in and talk about it. Okay? So would you just like to give us a little overview of what you're doing?
Yep, very simple. We first.
Could you stand up?
I'm sorry.
Do you mind?
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
The summary is we'd like to put another apartment in the building.
Does everyone know what building we're talking about? Is it church in East Cameron?
Church on the corner of Slusser and Main Road. I've been rehabbing it for about the last five years on the outside. And to keep the outside from getting inside. And then I ultimately like to have a building permit to put in an additional apartment. There are two in the building currently that have been there since 1975. And I'd like to put in one more. That's really the, the goal of the process on the outside was to keep it looking like you see it now, as far as it's always going to look like it does.
It looks very nice.
Thank you. It's been, it's been a challenge, but at the same time, I'm able to all doing it. So that's really the summary is we want to put in another apartment. It won't change anything. Most people wouldn't even know. There's people now that don't even know there's two apartments in there. But that's, that's it in summary. A lot of fun doing it, but details, I'm always willing to talk.
There was some question about parking.
Yes, there was. From the, from the sheets that I was trying to follow, it commented about 10, 10 parking places to store snow. So I went and tried to establish whether or not there would ever be room for 10 parking spots. The disconnect was I counted two that encroached into a right of way. So I reconfigured it. I submitted an alternate map of where they would go. And so they're not in conflict with being in a right of way.
We all have a copy of that. Everything that you sent it, Matt forwarded to us, and everyone has a copy.
Yep.
Okay, what we can do for you tonight is set a public hearing for the special use permit. Now, our next meeting is February 6th, and there's also one on February 20th. Is the reading better for you?
The 6th, I was looking earlier on the way over, and the 6th. Yep, perfect.
Six? Okay, I would entertain motion to set. Motion by Don. Seconded by, was that a second?
I'll second.
And this is for February 6th, and we'll set it for seven o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, roll call please.
Don.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, we'll see you on the 6th. You'll get a copy of the agenda again.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, Jason, we were going to start with you, but we've got a speaker coming in that needs to come in quick and leave quick. So we were kind of waiting.
No problem.
But I don't see her yet, so why don't we go ahead and start with, start your presentation? Okay, you have some, we found out we do need a special use permit. And in order to do that, you're going to need a public hearing.
Yep.
So what we plan to do tonight is set a public hearing, the same as we did for Mr. Winters. And that could, that could be on February 6th or February 20th.
The sooner the better, probably. I guess the 6th is fine.
You want to do it on the 6th?
Yeah, that's great.
Now, there was some questions about the site plan.
It was actually hours of operation was one of them.
Well, for the special use permit, I'm going to ask for the same one that Chris Mosier has. And I'll give it to everyone, and you can review it, and then we'll, we'll set it. And we have to take in mind that there will be more than one track racing now. So I don't know how that's going to work out, but we need to talk about that. We, even though we have the public hearing on the 6th, we may not pass your resolution or address your item because we, unless our questions are answered. We'll have questions after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? So we have, we have a motion. Is there any questions before we vote? Any other questions?
We don't have a motion.
But I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll set a public one.
Yeah.
Just a public hearing, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got Paul Marquesi saying the public hearing for the 6th, and we'll put that at 7:10. I don't think we'll have much on the first one. And then Paul McCullough seconding. Roll call please.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. So we've got your public hearing set. I will send out notices to the neighbors. We send to the neighbors 500 feet from your development, and I'll put an ad in the paper.
Okay.
Okay?
So that'll be February 6th then?
February 6th, and it'll be about 7:10. It'll be following the other public hearings.
Same location here?
It'll be in the big room.
Okay.
Probably.
Only other question I had was just, will that be for both applications that I put in, or?
Where's Matt?
There's two different projects.
Oh, Steve, can you answer that?
There's two different projects.
So we're, which project are we doing? Are we going to have to send two notices and two?
I would imagine.
Two of everything? Oh, I didn't know that. I better do it.
You could add them both at the same time.
Yeah.
I would get a part.
Okay.
I would make my motion to cover both of these projects.
Yeah, we, we need to add that to the motion, that this would be for the two projects on Harlock Road. Okay, will that then cover it?
That'd be great if you were voting.
Is that okay, Steve?
What's that?
Doing it for both? Not a big deal?
We just, we just amended the, to just both, both projects on Harlock Road.
For both projects.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
And so I will, when I send it out, yes, John?
Uh, she's here.
Whenever we're ready, she's here. Sharon's here.
Sharon's here.
Sharon's here.
Oh, Sharon's here, okay. So you're, you're all set then? I'll send everything out, and I will get in touch with you if I have any questions or if anyone has any.
Okay, so you're all set with me for tonight then?
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Okay, thanks very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Drive safe.
Sharon, we've got a spot down here for you.
Okay, don't worry.
And whatever requirements you have yourself, if you have any other requirements.
Oh, just if people could put their cell phones on their tiny old, that would be great.
Okay.
And usually I turn down the lights because it was a bit lower, would that be okay?
Yes, yes. You know how to do it?
Yeah.
Turn them on or off.
Well, she's a kind of guest. Okay.
Say good?
Fine with me, if it works for you.
I can only be in here a few minutes anyway, so I'll try to go quick.
So this is Sharon McWesley. You've got the information that she's been forwarding to us, and she's going to make a presentation tonight.
Well, thank you. Most of you have received my emails for many months. And I have, what I did was each document that I sent, I summarized the source of those documents. And first of all, I want to thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Anyway, my glasses are fogging up. But anyway, in the, in the six relevant documents that I have sent would support my request for a code. It's called an E360 code that manages the radiation in counties. And I spoke with Greg over the years, and sent him documents too. And he had submitted this document to the town's lawyers. So I believe the sample of Copake's E code 360 has already been submitted to the lawyers. I have, in that information I sent out, an organization reviewed Copake's ordinance. And they, they described sections of it that could be improved. So it isn't a pure sample, even though it's been passed in Copake County. And it was reviewed as one of the best codes. And that's why Greg had earlier found one, but it hadn't been passed legally. So that's why we switched from that county to Copake County. And I'm asking you to support the passage of this ordinance. And I have time tonight to answer any questions that you might have regarding this ordinance and what do we do.
Well, actually, do we have any authority to, to pass the resolution on that? It would be the town board that would do that. We could, we could recommend to them. That's what we normally do here.
When I spoke to him, he suggested that I come to the planning board.
He's probably looking for a recommendation. I can talk to him about that.
Oh, okay. All it does is, in simple terms, I mean, even though the document is pages and pages long, it just requires that the town work with telecommunications companies and have setbacks for small and large towers, for like public locations, schools, churches, residential sections. So that, I mean, even though the ordinance is, you know, focuses on, you know, like appearances, heights of these towers, how far apart they're placed, all that was, that's addressed in the ordinance, but it focuses also on the safety of human beings. And the last email that I sent out was primarily based on the impacts of, of the radiation on human bodies. And so the BioInitiative, the very last one I sent over this weekend, is an update from this organization that published this, over 1,500 pages of a meta-analysis of what radiation does to the body. That came out about 10 years ago. It was just updated again in 2018, I believe. And that's the one that I sent out, was the last email I sent out. I also sent out the code, the E code 360 from Copake Township. So the information is there. If you, if you're not into reading the research, and it goes over my head much of it, but if you just read the abstracts and the conclusions, and I just want you, this one here, this one here, they've done an analysis. There was 229 studies, and I sent this out also. 229 studies, of those 229, 208 of them, or 91% said that there were effects from radiation, even low level, EMF, extremely low levels of radiation. 91, let me repeat that, 91%, or 208 studies showed that there were effects on our bodies. I can, I personally have been affected, otherwise I wouldn't be here. I spent years during COVID studying what my condition is. So anyway, 29, or excuse me, 21% of these research studies, or 9% said there was no effect. This is a very controversial subject. And I've spent years, because I've been so affected by it. I'm now housebound. The only reason I can be in this room is because the lights are down and hopefully the radiation from your cell phones have been turned off. If they haven't been, I usually will wake up in the night having symptoms. So it doesn't always show immediately, but I get migraines, not migraines, headaches, itching, and I can't be, I can't live a normal life anymore. I can't. And that's a result of excessive radiation, no more than you could sit out in the sun and get a, a sunburn. You don't want to sit in the sun all day long. This stuff here, you can't smell. Most people can't feel it. You can't see it, but it's all around you. So I am pleading, actually, with this planning board to support this ordinance. And I could do anything to help. If somebody wanted to work in a Zoom work group and study the, the research, I've got it. I've got hundreds and hundreds of articles at home, in my computer. If anybody wants to work in a work group on Zoom, I would love to do that. But I plead for your support. Questions?
Sharon, well, I'd like to make kind of, since you can send us the articles. I yesterday called my beekeeper, and I've been working with him since '93. He has quite a few hives on my farm. And I says, what can you tell me about radiation and its effects on bees? And, because I've been reading a couple articles on it, he says, well, I have three acquaintances. He says, one, one has hives under power lines and doesn't really see, you know, the hydral- or hydrolines. And another guy has hives under hydrolines, and his hive is improductive. Then he says, then, I had another guy met, and he says, it had hives, and they put up a cell tower. Says it completely disseminated his hives.
Wow.
So that's what I learned yesterday on effect on bees and honey. I'm very concerned about bees, that's why you should have pollinators in our solar farms. So.
Thank you for that information. I too follow that. I follow 30% of our birds are, you know, already destroyed. The migration of birds are being impacted by the radiation, the lights. I don't know, but probably 30, 40 years ago, a book came out called Silent Spring. I would be, all I know is I'm a bird lover, and I can tell you my birds have, I used to have two, like 12 Cardinals 25 years ago. I'm down to one set of Cardinals in my backyard. And my grass is sweet. I never put anything on it. I put clover there for the bunnies. I love nature. I'm a farm girl at heart, and it makes me sick. When I was young, there were bats. I would go out at night, and there would be bats flying around. Of course, you know, kids, they're running around like crazy, didn't want them in their hair. I don't see any bats anymore.
I got them in my house.
But not in the wild. They are now putting up bat nests. Swallows, I've always lived close to River Street. You'd see swarms of swallows eating insects there. I haven't seen a swallow group in probably four or five decades. So I see it. And I can tell you, I've studied enough and know my mitochondria has been damaged. It will, there is no treatment for it. And being overexposed usually takes decades, but if slow, slowly you're getting it, the results could end up. There's, there's so much research out there. We just have to be open to it. If you go back and look at the research I sent you, it's from all around the world, what countries are doing, what China and Russia have been doing. Their codes are so strict compared to ours, because they've used it as weapons. I mean, it all came about with radar, the invention of radar, when our soldiers, the chocolate was melting in their pockets. This is not, FCC, that makes all the rules for this, they're now in Supreme Court the second time because they have not updated the research since 1996. 1996. And the research was on a man 220 pounds. And kids are chewing on their parents' bones. Moisture is a conductor of radiation, excellent conductor. And if you want to look at your own phones, there's warnings in there. I used to have an Apple phone. You go down six prompts, under legal, and it tells you not to be carrying your phones on your body. You're supposed to be at least this far away from your body, whatever it is, less than an inch. You're not supposed to. My friend had breast cancer. When her doctor did the x-rays or whatever test it was, she said to herself, oh my God, it's where I carry my phone. She had a double mastectomy. So I have a, many stories like that, many, many. But I, I can't, I'm, I can't go on, but I could go on. You've been a very captive audience, and I thank you for listening. If you have any questions, Kathy has my email.
Well, they all have your email.
They all have yours.
So they're free to pick your.
Be careful what you ask for.
But I would, if you, if there's any doubt in your mind, I would, I could go on forever, but I know I've used up my time. So thank you all, and thank you for your feedback on the beehives. I wasn't even going to go into the animals and the fish and everything.
Well, see, I knew the guy, and I called him, and he says, what can you tell me about microwaves and towers and all that? You have any experience? And he told me, which took me back a minute, so.
Yeah. Well, if you've lived in this area and you've been a farmer, you know what's happening to our environment. I had two pear trees underneath my seven volt, 7,000 volt things. They all got, two, two got sick within a few years. And they were flourishing in the beginning. So anyway, that's the story of my pear trees. I've given up that.
I still have one.
Oh, yeah.
I get my pear tree once a year.
Yeah, so we have a partridge in a pear tree.
We really appreciate you.
You didn't think I would give that, did you?
And they're free to ask you questions.
Oh, yeah, ask me by email, and I will, I'm not an expert on, on research, but I can read summaries, and biological stuff goes over my head, but I don't know.
I'm going to attend a work session with the town planning board members, and I will ask them what they would like from us, what we could do to support you, and then we'll talk about it. If we can do something to help you, I'm sure we will.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I'm speaking for myself, but I'm assuming everyone would like to do, we'll see what the town wants to do.
Well, Greg, Greg has been in my court, but he's one person, you know, so.
I would want.
I appreciate any support you can.
I would want that, too, and input, too.
Say, I'm sorry, miss that.
I would want to know what the attorney's input is.
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
You too. You want the lights back, huh?
Yes, please. Yes, John. Oh, I thought you had some. Okay. Okay, now, we took our agenda a little bit, a little different than we have it listed. Did we cover everything? I believe we did. We have our, we set our public hearings, Sharon made her presentation. What I said to Sharon is what I planned on doing. I'll go to a work session. John, if you wanted to go too, we can see what the, what they want to do, and if there's something, we can make a recommendation or something. We can't take any formal action, because we're not that kind of board.
Right.
But let's see what they want from us, and if we can help Sharon, that, you know, she knows what she knows. So we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Well, I was quite taking bad advice.
I am really surprised about the bees, because you know what a supporter I am of bees, so. But, and the birds too, because I've noticed the birds are declining. Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
I just thought that, because I'm not feeding them as good as they used to.
No, I mean, we've got neighbors that actually chase swallows out because they build the nests and.
Yeah, actually, I made my own hardware thing on her lips, because I'm not cleaning that up for you.
It's disgusting.
We, we had to do the same thing. We put chicken wire. I did too. No, they were. Terry tarred it, and I said, no, this is drugs. Don't fly anymore. They get it started. That's right. They get started. I know, I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm not cleaning that up anymore. I did it for two years.
They're killing.
And they'll just keep coming back. They don't give up.
Okay, Matt.
Yes, Matt.
We've got you down here for the zoning officer report.
We don't have anything new on the, coming down the line now, right now. More or less just support in regards to any questions the board may have of these two presentations that you've set up, public hearings for.
Yeah, now, can you get us a copy of the special use permit that Chris Mosier had?
Sure.
That's something we just looked at a few years ago, and unfortunately, I'm not keeping records at home. I send everything back here, because we were losing things.
Yeah, we, we have all those, all that documentation. We also have all the scheduling that Chris provides for you every year.
Yeah, every year he does.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you, if you could send that to me, we'll forward it, and we can talk about that. This is going to be a little difficult, because what they said is true. There's going to be three things running at once. Is that going to be worse? Is that, how can we coordinate that? We'll have to take a look at it.
We'll have our review letter, initial review letter completed tomorrow on the two projects, and, which is really asking for a lot of information, just because of the application, there was really not much information there.
That's true.
This has a, you know, similar to all the other facilities alone. This has a, you know, similar to all the other facilities along there. You have the same information that we need. You know, you'll have to go through seeker and we'll need all that. So, we'll get that probably out tomorrow.
Okay.
Did they send enough to you, so you plan?
It's going to be difficult. We'll hold the public hearings, and we may not vote on that one. Probably the Wesley Winters. Does he need a seeker?
Yeah.
Is the short form seeker sufficient?
The two racetracks will need a seeker.
Yeah, no, one was done in '80 and one was done in '98. Matt got me that information.
Which, yeah.
We still need another one?
Yeah, this is a new project.
Okay, so then we're also going to have to seek lead agency.
Right.
Ooh, can we do a motion on that now?
You don't even have a type one.
Oh, that's right, okay.
You don't have any information.
So, all we're going to do now is hold a public hearing?
Yeah.
And that's all we can do? Okay.
You need to hear, it would be better if you had a full application and more information. But at the same time, you can always have another public hearing.
Mr. Winters did give us a copy of his seeker. It's a, it's a, the short form.
Yeah, it's a short form. So, so that one is more administrative, and just to give you the scope of the project. Because the property is located in a Hamlet district, so it allows for what he's intending. But according to our zoning schedule, all his scope of work is internal. So, the site plan is special use. There is some, there are some things that do have to be reviewed for the site plan, being a subject of the parking, but it's very minimal. So, the majority of what Mr. Winters is asking for is more of an administrative special use permit. Therefore, like, the seeker, we'd just be doing a short form.
Oh, okay. So, we could have that ready for the next meeting. And so, we don't have to hold him off. If he's working with you and you're, you're satisfied?
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
We could always pass a condition of your final approval.
It should be fine. I just have to check, engineering, we just have to check the sizing of the treatment system.
Okay.
Is there anything that was a gotcha, like zoning code or anything? Having three apartments in one structure or.
No.
Quiet code or anything?
Yeah, that was my initial concern, because even though our local zoning code is spelling out that three plus apartments considers it more or less a commercial, the building code also mirrors that. So, once you get into three units in one structure, it does, it's considered commercial for the building code, even though it's residential uses. The, but there's, there's no, zoning wise, there's real no showstoppers, no. It does fit within what that Hamlet commercial, yeah, Hamlet commercial. That district there is specked out for multifamily units, for mixed use, any type of stuff like that. So, it does meet the zoning aspect of it.
And all the setbacks and everything, because I know on. What, what side?
There's going to be change, though.
Yeah, that was called out by the county. So, Mr. Winters responded to that and moved those off of his count for parking purposes, because of, the existing structure is where it is. You know, it's not, you're not going to be able to meet current setbacks. But at the same point, he's making that attempt to, you know, get that feedback and try to alleviate that parking in the right way. Yeah, because the west side is like, right on the.
Yeah, it's right on the, yeah.
And he needs a special use permit because it's commercial?
Yeah, well, because our zoning code says it, more or less. Now, the commercial aspect of things, I was just letting you know on the, on the building code side of things. But, yeah, our zoning Schedule A just specs out that in that district, unless it's a single or two-family residence, it requires a special use permit and site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay, I was just trying to think how to word it in the public hearing announcement.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to get those out this week. Could you get me the labels?
Yep, and well, I'll do that tomorrow. And I'll also get you the special use permit documentation for Area 51, so you guys can look that over before.
For the three, the three resident one, even special use permit, what kind of items might be in that special use permit, if any? Because typically, we call out restrictions or something.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, whatever your purview says, I don't see an issue. The biggest thing was the parking in the right way. Not that we can dictate whether somebody parks there or not. We're just making sure that, to approve this on behalf of the town, that it's accounted for elsewhere to meet the code.
It doesn't set off anything like sprinklers or any of those?
No, I did a thorough review on that one, and a lot of that comes down to if there was, if the structure was set up differently, there's a potential for requiring residential style sprinklers. But in this case, it doesn't. Because that was one of the first things that in the past we've dealt with. So, we wanted to make sure we clarified that. And we did a roundtable with all of us in the department to make sure we're on the same page.
And anything about the number of entries or exits per apartment or anything like that?
Nope, nope. Because really, emergency egress and general egress are two separate things. But it doesn't require, because they have direct access straight out to the public way. So, that, in that case, they're fine.
No, no, within the apartment, not the parking wise.
Yeah, so this would be an R3, so it's 75 feet, building to the closest exit, which most buildings have.
Or right up a window or whatever that.
No, it doesn't have to be. It just has to meet the requirement. Otherwise, it needs sprinklers and it goes on R50.
Yeah, and that was our big concern, looking into it. Because once we go up to that third apartment, you know, life safety is paramount for what we want to look at. And that was the first thing that we attacked. And like I said, we went back and forth, because the code changes a lot. And we want to make sure we're all on the same page for this one.
Any other questions on anything going on right now? I see the new pizza place is opening. They had all their lights on today and the, so they, it looked open. Did it look open to you?
There's a couple cars.
Couple cars.
Yeah.
But it's been that way for.
Yeah, I know. All the lights were on this time, not just one, so it's looking better. Okay, anything else? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wow.
I'll wait for you.
He can't hold yet tonight. Motion by Dan, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
I'm not, I'm not doing that.